We will now call the February 4th meeting. Before we do the roll call, just a note, our mics are out, so please talk a little normal, a little louder than normal, we are being recorded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzikowski.
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Barb, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, please take a look at the minutes of January 21st. When you're satisfied, there's no corrections, errors, omissions, questions, motion. Kerkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2020. Oh, Dukenyak is second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lauren.
Epstein.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Epstein.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Item number four is consideration of a motion to confirm the nomination of Catherine Roski as the appointed city clerk for the city of Oak Creek effective May 1st, 2021. Andrea, you just want to give us a little background, you guys all have the staff report and you're well aware of the nomination that's taking place tonight.
Sure, just real quickly recounting a little bit of history, some recent history, this is a follow-up to the action that the council took with regards to its charter ordinance on November 19th, I believe is the date. There was a period of waiting that had to go by before that action of the common council could become quote-unquote "effective." That time has passed and we are simply finalizing the last stage of this transition to an appointed clerk and appointed treasurer roles in the community. So, as we, as we kind of put this forward, the plan all along was, again, having a more predictable, more stable type of manner of selection for these two positions. And we had always had in mind that the incumbents in those positions would be the appointees because that's who we want to continue in these roles. So, these next two items are really the culmination, really the last step in effecting that, which calls for the mayor to nominate for appointment of the individuals on the agenda now, in this case, of course, Catherine, and tomorrow. So, that's, that's what we're here to do this evening.
So, barring any questions you have with the staff reports, I don't see anything to my left or right, we'll consider a motion on four.
Gail will move to approve the confirmation, confirm the nomination of Catherine Roski as the appointed city clerk for the city of Oak Creek effective May 1st, 2021.
Chris, council, Gail's second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Item five is a consideration of a motion to confirm the nomination of Barbara Gukkenberger as the appointed city treasurer for the city of Oak Creek effective May 1st, 2021. Once again, this follows the same format as our clerk did. Are there any questions regarding five? Seeing none, Ken?
Sorry, Mayor, not a question, just to kind of reiterate and just make a statement across the board for Catherine and for Barb, we are blessed to have two individuals who are incredibly strong in their roles here and I have long advocated, and I think the mayor would support that too, we have long advocated and look forward to the opportunity to actually kind of brighten sides and make this organization more effective, and I think these two appointments are certainly a great move in that direction. So, with that said, unless anyone else has a comment or a question?
Very well said, Ken.
I will move to confirm the nomination of Barbara Gukkenberger as the appointed city treasurer for the city of Oak Creek effective May 1st, 2021.
Guzikowski is second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item six, it's informational tonight, it's a treasurer's report from Barbara Gukkenberger for a period ending December 31st, 2019. Welcome, Barb.
Thank you. Alright, so it's an investment in banking, month ending December 31st, 2019. Our beginning balance was $33,487,193.37. Ending balance, $73,786,815.05. Interest earned, $64,195.76. It's an increase of just over $40 million. So, the major December activity, our tax collection was just about $43.8 million, about 49.6% of the total levy was collected. City shares, about 14, just under $14.9 million, and our debt service payments that went out was about $890,000.
Any questions for Barb, comments? Anything, Ken?
Nope.
Good, thanks for that. Thank you, Barb. Gets us to item seven, consideration of a motion to approve the Homatrol extraction tools and related equipment, the amount of $54,217. And Chief Kresic is here to explain exactly what that equipment is.
Good evening, Mike Kresic, Fire Department. Before you tonight to seek approval for the purchase of the Homatrol extrication equipment and associated inventory valued at $54,217, with funding coming out of CIP project 20004, which was funded at $60,000. The background of this is we are replacing two sets of extrication equipment along with three combination tools. Our Hearst equipment is approximately 20 years old and our TNT extrication equipment is approximately 10 years old. In their day, they were the premier sets of extrication equipment, but as you'd imagine, over the course of time, the technology in vehicles has changed rather dramatically, more use of high-strength steels and other design features that render our tools somewhat obsolete for addressing newer vehicles. A little background on how we came up with the Homatrol selection. We established upon approval of the CIP during the budget process, we established a committee led by Assistant Chief Mike Haiti, Battalion Chief John Martin, and three firefighters. They had the opportunity to review four equipment sets, Homatrol, Hearst, TNT, and Genesis. Of those four, they selected Hearst and Homatrol for field testing, and they had the opportunity to use the tools in extrication scenarios. Following that testing, the recommendation from the group was the Homatrol tools. They felt that the tool performed best when compared to the Hearst tool, and the sales and the price point was something that would come in under budget and allow us to add an extra combi tool over what we anticipated to be part of our initial purchase. You know, one thing I want to, I want to talk about, our previous tools, our current tools, are all run on hydraulic systems off gas-powered engines. We will be transitioning to E-tools. These are battery-powered tools that offer more cutting power than in the past. The big advantage is there's a weight reduction. Any of you have the experience to ride along with us or do any MATC scenarios and use extrication tools, extremely heavy. The E-tools are much lighter and much more mobile, and that certainly is an advantage for our department, is to maneuver the tools and access vehicles and patients as necessary. The recommendation for purchase is through Jefferson Fire, they are the sole distributor in the state of Wisconsin for Homatrol tools, and they did develop a state-fit pricing scheme for the, for Wisconsin, and we felt that that presented a good value to us. The purchase would be for a full extrication set, which is a ram, a spreader, and a cutter, and three combi tools, which are smaller versions, which are for minor extrications, popping a door, and those would be distributed among the three stations. Also included are 11 batteries. Being a, this is a new foray into extrication for us, it's not the generators anymore, it'll be battery-powered. The batteries tend to be a little bit pricey, but certainly we anticipate with the expected use of the tool, be able to maintain those batteries adequately. The last part of the purchase is, because we came in under budget, we added some stabilization and glass-cutting tools to round out our extrication inventory.
Okay. Questions for Chief Kresic?
Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd district. Mike, how many times a year are those extrication tools used?
That's a great question, and the, working with the committee, we tried to identify the exact amount of time we bring those tools out and utilize them in the field. We can anticipate that we are dispatched to 12 to 15 extrication calls per year. Now, all of that 12 to 15, the actual events that require the full deployment of a full set of tools might range 1 to 2 to 3 over the course of the year. Those are the large-scale events, so certainly those are a lower occurrence for us. The much greater occurrence, it's a little bit harder to track, are those motor vehicle crashes that may not be, for lack of a better term, significant motor vehicle crashes, but require us to pop the door, to make a simple cut to help remove a patient. Those happen on a more frequent level, and those aren't coded as extrications in our CAD system, and our committee estimated that those roughly would be 12 to 15 per year.
Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
And Ken?
Mike, just for education purposes, these write on one particular rig or are scattered around your fleet, or how does that work?
So, currently, our first set, the oldest set, is on truck 181 out of Station 1, and the TNT sets at Station 3 on Engine 183, so they are split up in the city with a combi tool on each of the engines, Station 2, Station 1, and Station 3. Our goal with this is to really go to one main set of equipment, the Homatrol, and that would be placed on Engine 183. The combi tools, the quick-hit tools, would be placed at Station 1, Station 2, and a reserve set at Station 3.
Mike Alderman Dukenyak, one more time, can we expect, again, 10 to 20 years of service out of these new pieces of equipment?
So, I'll reference, I'll start with the easy part of that, the warranty on the Homatrol equipment is lifetime, and we maintain annual service agreements on those to keep that equipment up to a standard as identified by the manufacturer and NFPA. The batteries will roughly run a two-year warranty, and we would anticipate replacement in a two-to-three-to-four-year cycle on those. We would anticipate an extended life for this equipment, what we can anticipate, though, is vehicle technology. You know, when you look at our history, though, you're looking at about a 20-year window on that Hearst equipment and a 10-year window on the TNT, and we've come back around to looking at this point, so I would certainly not expect less than 10 to 15 years.
Good, thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Any other questions for Chief Kresic? I assume none? Motion, please. Kerkowski make a motion to approve the purchase of Homatrol extrication tools and related equipment in the amount of $54,217.
Lauren will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item eight is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the municipal code to adopt the comprehensive plan of the city of Oak Creek, and looks like Doug's all set and ready to go.
I will start it off, so, as a planner, the comprehensive plan is really the ultimate expression of how our profession can impact the community, and I've been fortunate enough to be able to do two plans for the city of Oak Creek. One, just draw your attention for a second, take a look at your staff report, take a look at the comprehensive plan on the wall, take a look at the critical success factors. How often is it that you have an item before you that ticks off all of those critical success factors? That's how important a comprehensive plan is. And I think we've had a really good experience with our consultants, HLA, and really driving as much public input as possible to make sure that this iteration of the comprehensive plan, you know, serves us well for the next 10 years. With that, just want to say I'm really proud of the work that Carrie's done and working with consultant HLA on this plan, the work that the Plan Commission's done, and I wanted you to hear it from her in her own words, and her to introduce Brandon, our consultant, because I think they've just done a heck of a job on that, and I would urge you to support the comprehensive plan, and look forward to working with them closely on the creation of a new zoning ordinance.
Carrie?
Thank you, Doug. Thank you to the members of the council. I am going to give you just a brief background to explain how we got to this point. You may recall that we engaged with House Hill Levine Associates back in the spring of 2018, and we had a series of events that allowed us to have several participation events with staff, we held several steering committee meetings, we had public participation in the form of map.social, which was an online mapping program that allowed anybody anywhere in the city to provide comments, provide pins for places that they wanted to call attention to within the city. We had online surveys, in-person interviews, workshops, and we had our most well-attended event at the tree lighting ceremony, where we received lots of great input through just talking with people and with having a small survey. And then that ended with a public open house to present the draft of the plan on October 10th, which was very well-received by the public that was in attendance. We did provide some district summaries to the common council in November to kind of give you an idea of some of the highlights of what the comprehensive plan was incorporating for each of your districts, and we also incorporated some corrections and a couple of comments that we had received from the various input sessions, with speaking with the Plan Commission at several meetings. Those included updating the utility property, just to kind of show where the utility had acquired property in the last couple of years. We added a flex overlay district to commercial properties on 27th and Rossin based on input. We also were just making a couple of other corrections to make sure that the maps were all following the same criteria. And then we also had some interesting information that we received from the Plan Commission regarding a conversation about how 13th Street between Rossin and really it stretched down to Drexel, how that would be treated in the future. And what the decision was made was to have the east side of 13th Street between Rossin and the properties that are owned currently by Bass Holdings, also known as Go Right Way, would remain commercial, and then down to the cemetery right before Drexel would still stay as future for industrial. That's merging with the current industrial park that's on 10th Street, so it allows for that continuation. We also received some comments regarding the implementation matrix, that's in the back of the comprehensive plan, gives you an idea of how we can achieve the goals set forward in the comprehensive plan. And the Plan Commission adopted this at their last meeting on the 28th by resolution, and we are asking for the common council to do the same. I have with me Brandon Nolan, who is one of the chief consultants with us, who worked with us on this project. If you have any questions, we'd be very happy to answer them.
Thank you, Carrie. We'll open it up for questions from the council. Steve, you want to start us off?
Sure. Alderman Kerkowski, 1st district. Carrie, the, you just mentioned about the properties on 13th on the east side from Go Right Way south to the cemetery would be industrial. Currently, there's six or eight residents, residences that are there. How are they going to find out about the comprehensive plan that's going to affect their properties?
Well, let me see if I can answer the question by saying that the current residences may be allowed to stay there as residences. The comprehensive plan, future land use, would allow those to transition to industrial uses at such time that a use of that nature was proposed. It's an enabling document. It would allow for future reviews like rezoning and things of that nature to move forward. The logical extension of that industrial park that's established along 10th Street would allow that to continue west to 13th Street. We have some properties that are currently owned by existing business park tenants there, so this allows them to kind of expand that logical westward motion, but it doesn't mean that it has to.
Right. I just, the first thought was the residents would hear about this and all of a sudden jump to conclusions that their property is going to be rezoned and they'll be forced out, and
Right.
I want to not have to talk them off the ledge and just tell them that, well, that's the future plans, you're happy to stay here as long as you want.
Right.
But somewhere down the future, this may be, what this property may turn into?
Correct, and we did have a couple of comments that were raised, and we do have to make a distinction between the comprehensive plan, which is allowing future land use so that this property can be redeveloped or turned over in the future, but it's not rezoning. Rezoning is a completely separate step, and that is not included in the comprehensive plan. So, we had several sessions and several opportunities for comments, for the public to give their comments, to answer any questions that they may have, so we did an extensive outreach to the best of our ability.
And I would like to compliment you and everybody involved, because sometimes people will say, well, the city wants to do something and we, we never hear about it. Well, I think if they didn't hear about this, this comprehensive plan that the city was trying to do, I don't know where they've been, because you gave them, everybody ample opportunities to get involved, especially tree lighting, I thought that was a great way to get the word out.
That was one of our most well-attended events to the state.
Thank you.
Greg, anything? Rich?
Nope.
Chris?
I'd just like to say that from the Plan Commission's perspective, we put a lot of time and effort into this, and I appreciate all of the pressing information that we were given, but we were definitely, everything's well documented, and Carrie and crew, thank you very much for helping set us up for success here in the next 10-plus years.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Carrie, your colleagues from House Hill Levine, obviously a fantastic effort, it's obviously been an ongoing, ongoing journey. Unfortunately, we didn't get the final draft until very late yesterday, so it's going to be slow to go through it again, I've read it once before, I know my colleagues have had it a couple of times with the Planning Commission, so other than that, we've stuck mostly to the, to the implementation matrix, but I know they're reading through it again today, I highlighted there's some things that I think need to be cleaned up a little bit before we actually move to approval, so probably have to sit down with some planning staff and just clarify some of those things before we find that, but in general, the efforts are exemplary, and I think it will serve the city well after we get those things cleaned up a little bit. I know I had a chance to watch the Planning Commission tape from the meeting this, last week, Tuesday, unfortunately, the minutes haven't been published yet, so other council members that were not on the Planning Commission, I haven't seen those yet, so, that said, I think for the time being, I prefer and suggest that we actually hold this until in the February 21st meeting to clear, clean up some of those things, given the fact that this document is going to be the guiding force for much of the planning of the city for the next two decades, I prefer to get it right the first time around.
And I would agree with you, I mean, if we have to take it, we've been this far. At planning, we did think we were cleaned up to about where we needed to be, but to be fair, this is a large document taken all in one bite, so if you haven't had a chance to go through it, you know, obviously you're going to look at your district first, but it also helps to have another set of eyes on other people's districts as well, it doesn't hurt, so.
Yeah, there are some nuance, and new ideas that obviously you guys have seen there and have not been used in this city before, on land that has not been really contemplated by those uses before, so those are important considerations, especially some of the more, I think, progressive ideas in there, especially with the potentially practically zoning properties, some of the move from what is formerly been agricultural land, single fam is a step that some people need to cope with, so. I noticed some, some things in general, just from a consistency standpoint, the transportation plan and some of the land use plans are, need to be tightened up a little bit, so we'll look at those as we, over the next few weeks.
Mayor, if I could quick too, if we're, I think what, what I'm hearing is this document's important enough to the council that, you know, we want to take our time to be deliberate about it, and I think that's placing the weight and emphasis on this document that should be there, so I don't want to take, that doesn't take anything away from the effort that's been made, which has been awesome, and you know what, we've read the staff of, we've read this, I've read this comprehensive plan actually as well, and it's, it's one of the most better, you know, one of the most well-written documents I've read, it actually didn't put me to sleep, and that's, that's great, I think that speaks to the effort that was put into it, but if we are going to take another meeting to iron out some of the issues with the text that maybe Ken has some ideas on, and maybe others do too, I would stress the importance of really looking at that implementation matrix again. That is the meat and potatoes, and you can see how, you can see the, the decision that was made, the wisdom of the decision that was made to use House Hill Levine to do our comprehensive plan as well as our zoning code rewrite, because these things all dovetail. If you look at that implementation matrix, you really need to agree to those principles and those, those ideas and those projects, because really that's your land use strategic action plan. I know we are, we're all familiar with that term now over the last three-plus years. This comprehensive plan informs what we are going to do and what we are going to emphasize and prioritize in our zoning code rewrite, and a lot of that, those tasks and priorities that are included in that implementation, implementation matrix are going to find their way into the next iteration of our strategic plan, whether by its, whether by reference or we've cut and pasted into our new strategic action plan document in end of 20, beginning of 2021, when we craft that next iteration of that plan. So, really focus a lot of attention on those principles and those priorities in that, in that implementation matrix, that's, that's what I would stress at this time, as well as in the, in the text that might want to be due an additional consideration, or Ken for us.
Mike, thoughts and input?
I'm good. I would defer, Ken, I need a little more time, too.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's not to push more work onto you or anything like that, you've done a terrific job, but it's that important to get this multi-year document right, and I do have to agree with the council in that regard. I'd rather err on the side of caution, make sure they feel absolutely comfortable and understand what's in the document as best to their values, too, because to you guys, you live and breathe it every day, some of the terms and some of the things going on are maybe a little bit different, cause for questions. So, motion, hold until the next meeting, which would be the 21st? 17th?
And I would just offer on behalf of our staff, please don't feel like you need to wait until the meeting to ask your questions, we're here, feels like 24/7 sometimes, but a lot, so just give us a call, shoot us an email.
And I know, and the staff's always open, and it goes for the public, too, I had a lot of public comments saying, oh, we didn't know this was going on. The staff in City Hall has made great lengths to put this out there, as Carrie said, it's been at multiple public events, they had open houses for this, it's been out there, it's been on our webpage, Facebook page, it's been in the acorn, it's been all over the place, so if you haven't seen it, sorry, we did our best to get it out there, there's a responsibility on you to, to keep abreast as to what's going on in the city, to those of you that contacted me that we didn't put it out there over the last year and a half. Motion? Our motion, motion to hold until, is it 21st or the 17th?
17th.
17th.
Gail will move to hold ordinance number 2963, an ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the municipal code and adopt the comprehensive plan in the city of Oak Creek to the next scheduled common council meeting on February 17th.
Guzikowski will second.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nine, bring this to the License Committee and let the term now over to Alderman Kurkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume everybody has had a opportunity to review the License Committee report prior to the meeting. Everybody have any questions or concerns about the report? Seeing none. Kurkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the February fourth, two thousand twenty License Committee report.
Dukniak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
I don't know. Item ten is our vendor summary report for January twenty-ninth. Everybody has the information in front of them, and if there are any questions, someone at the front table can probably take it between Mike and Bridget.
Mike, question, just on eight, just for a lecture of veterinary while we're ready to the point of half the bond goes for landscaping.
And maybe I can answer that. Typically, the reason we have landscape bonds, and I understand this may have incorporated a few other elements, is if the project's being completed in the winter months, obviously you don't want to put in landscaping where it's not suited to survive long-term, so we require a landscaping bond, and then in spring, when the plan is ready, go back and verify that and lease that. They actually took the extraordinary measures of putting in landscaping in season, and to that, acknowledgement of that, the city is refunding half of that, again, with the thought that, I mean, we'll make a reinspection in spring, and those things that did not survive in winter, we'll come back and clean those up, put that up.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Just kind of odd on a half-bond, so. Seeing none? Motion?
Gale, move to approve the January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty vendor summary report in the combined total amount of four hundred eight thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars forty-nine cents.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Laura.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And item eleven is consider a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen twenty-five, parent one, parent G, to discuss Robin Machet Schmidt et al. versus the city of Little Creek, and also consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen twenty-five, parent one, parent G, to discuss Tamika Bates et al. versus city of Little Creek. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen twenty-five, sub one, sub G, to discuss Robin Machet Schmidt et al. versus city of Little Creek et al. and eleven A, convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen twenty-five, sub one, sub G, to discuss Tamika Bates et al. versus city of Little Creek et al.
Kurkowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
We'll now convene in closed session and resume at its conclusion. We'll now consider a motion to move in to hold the session.
Gale moves to reconvene in open session.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
And item thirteen, no action is needed, which will address to adjournment. Before we adjourn, our destination marketing specialist has asked me to pass this on, seeing as we won't be meeting again up until the fourteenth, but Friday the fourteenth at Drexel Town Square, we have our first-ever date and skate, so we will have a pop-up ice rink with free skate rentals, DJ, fire pits, and all the area restaurants will be having specials on the square. So if you're looking for a date night, come on down to Drexel Town Square on Friday the fourteenth, and then it continues on the fifteenth as we kick off our annual Winter Fest from ten AM to four PM. There'll be ice carving demonstrations, the pop-up ice skating rink with free skate rental will once again be going that day, DJ, winter market will take place, outdoor vendors will be there, ice games such as mini golf, ice painting, and more for the kids will be there. This is a family-centric event, so please take some time and come on down to Drexel Town Square on February fourteenth and fifteenth. So with that, is there's any other comments? Anything else going on in the city?
Early voting.
Early voting. Catherine, would you like to say a word about early voting?
Early voting for the spring primary partisan election, nonpartisan election is running this week, eight to four, and then all next week, Monday through Thursday, eight to four here at City Hall, and eight to five on Friday the fourteenth.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Steve?
Mayor, Friday, February fourteenth is Valentine's Day, so that'd be a good date night there. I think that was the premise of the escape, but thanks for the reminder, I could probably use that.
Kurkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Lorcal, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Laura.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.